Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission will call it in order. McKenna, if you would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. Commissioners, you have the minutes of our November seventeenth meeting in your packets. Are there any questions? If not, I would call for a motion, please.
Chair Warren, our medical motion minutes be approved as presented?
Second.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
State.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
State.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. Commissioners, you have the subdivision site development plans in your packets. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we will enter into our public hearing. Mr. Moore.
Chair Warren, I request that you order the record include tonight all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications of staff witnesses who testified. Finally, I request you administer the oath to each of those witnesses.
Y'all swear to tell the truth?
Yes sir.
Thank you. We have no new business, is that correct, Ben? All right. We have one item of old business. Twenty twenty-two eighty-six Z County A M Builders LLC care of Alan Miller has filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately two point one seven acres, excuse me, located at zero Bristol Road, formerly fourteen thirty-five Bristol Road, from Ag to RE Residential State with a general development plan. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on March the seventh for the property that you mentioned and that is highlighted in the yellow. The current zoning is agriculture. The current land use is vacant. The future land use is low density residential. And just to resummarize, the applicants are looking to rezone from agriculture to RE in order to create two building lots. The remaining portion of the property is proposed to remain zoned agriculture and will be added to the adjacent property at one eleven McGinnis Road. And the applicants did supply a site plan for your review. Looking over at page two under the site characteristics review, under transportation infrastructure, the property has frontage on Bristol Road and E D F Petty Road. Both our county maintain rural local roadways with fifty feet right of way and approximately sixteen feet of pavement width. This application generally complies with the majority of the items in this section with considerations noted regarding the road width for Bristol Road and D F Petty Road. Looking down at site design and compatibility, the building materials, roughly sixty percent of the homes in the area have a vinyl exterior. The remaining homes are a mix of brick, hardy board, metal, and wood. Building foundations are a mix of poor concrete, brick, stone, plain face block, and split face block. The applicants did not address building or foundation materials for the proposed residences. Looking over at the development plan conditions, the applicants did supply development plan conditions. Number one addresses the building orientation. Number two, any new primary residential structure constructed on the property shall contain a minimum of fifteen hundred square feet of heated and cooled space. Number three addresses the septic system. Number four addresses tree preservation and sinkhole mitigation. Number five addresses access to the property. And number six, the new residences will be constructed to have at least a one car garage similar to adjoining residences. Looking at the focus twenty thirty category review, staff reviewed fourteen items for compliance and I will highlight three of those for your consideration. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with considerations noted regarding building and foundation materials and if it complies with L U one point one point three. This proposal may comply with L U two. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high quality development incorporates design standards. And again, the applicants did not specify the building or foundation materials planned for the proposed residences. And then looking over at page four, the very last one there, the proposal may comply with H N two point one and H N four. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development plan and conditions require that any redevelopment be located in a suitable location and if it would enhance the array of housing options available in the area. Flipping back to page one, to the points to consider, the current road width for Bristol Road and D F Petty Road is sixteen feet, which is less than the current eighteen foot county road minimum standard. And the applicant did not address the building or foundation materials for the proposed residences. That is all we have for a staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Amy. Commissioners, any questions?
Oh, I think we were great with the, just other than talking about the building materials.
Building materials and the foundation?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
That's you.
Well, yes, just a minute, Mr. Miller, hang on just a second. If you would come, you're the applicant, correct? If you would come to the microphone, please? And if you would state your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Alan Miller from A M Builders. My address is five thirty-one Thomas Bend Road, Munfordville, Kentucky.
Just a second, you gonna swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. You heard Mr. Volker's questions?
Yeah, the, out there, I'm trying to keep them where they're affordable a little bit more. So what we're trying to do is go with the split face block foundation and a vinyl exterior. Could be a little stone accents, but for the most part, it's gonna be vinyl.
Amy, remind me of everything around it, is that?
We'll see. Pull your microphone down, Amy, just a second.
House adjacent to it, we actually built in probably three, four years ago.
And is it all vinyl?
The way it's built.
Okay.
Sixty percent of the homes in the area do have vinyl exterior there. And then it looks like the homes do have a mix of brick, hardy board, and metal and wood for the remaining.
Mr. Miller, would you be agreeable to the front of the houses being either brick or hardy board? Percentage wise, it's not a huge percent.
I would like to not, just because everything else right in there is vinyl.
Okay.
And the house next door to you on the thing is Bristol Road is actually like a log type thing, like a log siding. I would prefer to stay with vinyl if that's not a problem. Just to try to keep the cost down with interest rates.
I understand, Mr. Miller, but I think what Commissioner Volker was asking, we're trying to, as we go through this process, to raise the elevation of the neighborhoods. And I think he's asking a fair request of you and as Mr. Volker said, it wouldn't be that much more to agree to.
Because you can have vinyl on the eaves and I mean, so what you're really talking about with the windows and doors, you're probably only talking about, well, you're probably only talking about ten percent of the house on the front of it. And we're just, and as everything comes through these days, that is one of the things that we're trying to, we're trying to get away from a hundred percent vinyl.
Sure, no, I get that.
So would you be okay with that?
Yeah, I would be okay with that.
Okay.
Brick front.
And a split block foundation?
Well, the, yeah, in this case, we would use the smooth block in the front and it would all get covered with the brick.
Okay, so it'd be covered with brick?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's perfect.
That's fine.
The only split face you would actually see would be along the sides and the back.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
The front facade, this would be in D P C number two. That the front facade will be what percent brick, Christian?
Brick or modern masonry material?
Yes.
What percent?
Oh.
Hundred percent.
Just a hundred percent of the front. Just no, other than the eaves, no, you know, or the soft, no vinyl.
Brick or modern masonry material?
Yes.
And we said split faced block foundation covered with brick.
On the front? On the front.
On the front, smooth face.
It'd be a smooth block, yeah.
Brick will cover the smooth face.
Only on the front.
Side and back.
Say it again, Ben. No, I mean, I'm per-
If it's on the front, it would be brick or stone.
Be brick or heavy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sometimes, you know, we'll put an eyebrow across it and have like a shake or something like that up there.
Sure, yes, sir, we understand, we're just trying to.
Yeah.
We need to get it in the record, Mr. Miller.
Well, Mr. Miller, are those additions to D P C number two agreeable to you, those changes we just talked about?
They are, yes.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Miller? He's agreed to these changes. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or a comment regarding this zoning proposal? Hearing none, commissioners, a call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan docket number twenty twenty-one eighty-six Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Okay.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. Motion is approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-two oh four D P Suoyi, Suoyi, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Rental LLC care of John Suoyi has filed an application to amend the general development plan, development plan conditions on a tract of land containing point oh seven acres located at ten forty-eight Elm Street with the general development plan. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in October for the property you just referenced at ten forty-eight Elm Street. The current zoning is central business and the property was rezoned to this designation back in two thousand and six. The current use is single family and the future land use map is mixed use residential. The applicants have applied to amend the development plan conditions. Those are noted on page three and those are shown in bold font. One of the main proposed changes is number one, which deals with hours of operation. And so the new proposal is that hours of operation for any non-residential or non overnight accommodation use would be from seven A M to eleven P M. Number two deals with the architectural character. If the existing structure is ever replaced, it would remain residential and no more than two stories in height. Number three and four deal with signage. There are no proposed changes for those development plan conditions. Number five is proposed to be removed in its entirety. Currently, under the central business zoning, the uses and the restrictions are limited to office and or professional only. And so the applicants are hoping to remove this restriction but have prohibited specific uses in number five. Number six deals with access to the property. Seven addresses tree preservation. And eight addresses building orientation and building materials if the existing structure is ever replaced. Section three twelve eight of the zoning ordinance outlines the findings required to amend a development plan. And the applicant supplied the narrative that's about midway down the page there for your reference. And then looking at the focus twenty thirty category review, we'll touch on a few of these items, the first L U one point one point three. And one thing I didn't mention specifically, the applicant's intended use at this time is to convert the home into a short term rental. And so that was the main reason they've made this application. And so in L U one point one point three, that's why we've referenced that. And so the planning commission should consider if the conversion of the property from a professional office to a short term rental is compatible with the area. On page five, L U two, the planning commission should determine if the proposed amendment will result in quality development that will protect the character of the area. And then H N one and H N one point three, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a suitable infill project and if it will maintain and improve the existing character and pattern of development in the area. And with that, we have a couple of points to consider on page one. The first is that the application complies with the majority of the review criteria assessed by staff during the review process. And I had mentioned earlier that the current zoning was established in two thousand and six. And then in two thousand and six, the previous owner limited the property only to office and professional use. The applicant recently acquired the property from the previous owner and would like to amend the development plan in order to utilize the property for a short term rental use. And this is the site plan from two thousand and six. There's no changes proposed at this time as far as the exterior portion of the site is concerned. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt?
Rachel, wanted to be an Airbnb?
Yes.
Okay, so, well, so, I'm just, I'm curious what they would do from the seven to eleven? If they weren't, is it for like an event or a wedding party or something like that?
I think the hours of operation are mainly if the use in the future, if it wasn't a short term rental, that's the applicant's immediate plans for the property. But if someone else purchases the property later on down the road and maybe wanted to have some other use that would be allowed in central business, I guess that's why he has proposed the change in hours. But otherwise, the only use at this time that I know of, and you may want to ask the applicant, is the short term rental.
And did they, did they get the seventy-five percent signatures?
Well, it's just this one property. So there's only one property owner, so we have a hundred percent of the signatures.
Okay.
Yep.
Rachel, I have a question about as far as parking, if there is, is this multi? This might be a question for the applicant. Is it would be one rental at one time or would be multi rentals? Because there's not a whole lot of parking associated with this property and on Elm Street.
You may want to ask the applicant, I'm not sure if they are planning to rent out the entire home at one time or if they hope to rent each room within the home individually, but he should be able to answer that.
Commissioners, any other questions for Rachel? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here or their representative? Yes, sir, if you would come to the microphone, please? If you would state your name and address.
John Suoyi, forty-five eighteen Smith Grove, Scottsford Road, Smith Grove, Kentucky, four two one M one.
Suoyi?
Yes.
Would you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I think you heard the question as far as the hours of operation and if it is a short term rental, the parking, would it be one contiguous use or rent it out to others?
I have figured that it's four bedroom, so I'm going to cut the top, the two bedroom upstairs would be used only the two downstairs due to the quality of the parking. And it's mainly be focused for medical staffing only due to being to the location close to the hospital.
So you're planning on short term rentals to traveling nurses, traveling doctors? Okay.
It's not through Airbnb, it's through another site called Furnish Finder. That's all they focus on is medical staff.
Okay.
And could you answer the question Mr. Volker asked about why the hours of operation, expanding them from?
Seven to eleven.
Eleven o'clock at night.
Hopefully from eleven, they might can settle down and go to bed, you know, that's what.
Medical students, yes.
The hours don't come into play, correct?
Correct.
So from, so, and I completely understand what your intentions are, but I mean, are you intending on renting it out to somebody to use it just for the day and not spend the night?
It'd be overnight.
So. Would you be willing to strike this hours of operation? Because that, once we approve that, that stays in that.
It doesn't, it doesn't limit you for what you're trying to do. Is that fair to say?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, what you, I mean, we understand what you're trying to do and changing the hours. I mean, if somebody's staying overnight, it doesn't matter if they come in at midnight. That won't change anything.
Okay.
So if it's all right with you, could we stay with the seven thirty to nine just in case you sell the property and we don't allow somebody where they can, they can throw parties at night till eleven o'clock? Because it's a short term rental.
So same, okay.
That good?
Yes, sir.
You agreeable with that?
I do agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
D P C number one will remain with the hours of operation for any non-residential or non overnight accommodation use shall be within the hours of seven thirty A M to nine P M.
Correct. Does that agreeable, Mr. Suoyi? Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Suoyi?
I have one question. Mr. Suoyi, will you be the manager, you own the property, but will you also be the manager of that property? Or will you contract that management?
I do manage all my property, but I do have somebody that's fixed everything.
Okay.
So he's very good.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Suoyi, yes. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, ma'am, if you would come to the microphone, please? Yes, ma'am, if you would state your name and address, please?
Peter Meyer, nine twelve Elm Street.
Ms. Meyer, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for this opportunity. The new owner, Mr. Suti, is a real estate investor who says he wants to have a type of Airbnb, but his requested changes are so broad that they would allow almost any sort of development, including a bar or something noisy, something incompatible with the neighborhood without further review. The specific request to accommodate short term rental from the current owner has already been presented and discussed. I will add that Airbnb says that Bowling Green already hosts rooms in three hundred and twenty-nine homes, forty-five homes in just a narrow swath between Seventh and Twelfth Avenues, already as accessible to the medical center as this address would be. Is the area already oversaturated? Also, most Airbnbs are offered by homeowners who are on site and this would be an absentee owner situation with a little active management of guests. There is a national trend in favor of monitoring and regulating Airbnbs in the face of negative impacts. And you need to regulate these uses to protect the historic nature of the surrounding area and the uniqueness of the Bowling Green community. And I believe there are no technical Airbnbs or rental areas of that type exactly within sort of the, the sort of area uptown of Elm Street to the historic Bowling Green Water Tower. I could be wrong, but I don't know of any that have been approved. The whole area of brief history of zoning changes, the whole area uptown of Elm Street to the iconic Bowling Green Water Tower is originally residential. In the sixties and seventies, there were several conversions to business. But in the last two decades, in the square city block containing this house, there have been just three property conversions from residential to central business in two thousand and one, two thousand and three, and this one in two thousand and six. And all have had binding elements restricting business uses only to office and professional. The new owner's practices as a real estate investor to buy homes around the country, around the county with very low down payments and pay the mortgages with long term rental income. He has recently started using short term rental income as well and has not mentioned long term rental residential use in his plans for this property. If the new owner's intentions are actually to purchase, to pursue a new business beyond office or residential uses or to flip the house and hand it over to another developer who will, that should come before the planning commission as an explicit proposal since most other options would not be compatible with the current uses and character of the neighborhood. However, instead of requesting that overnight accommodation use be added to the existing binding elements to accommodate this plan, the applicant is requesting deletion of the allowed uses statement and instead offers a couple of likely and unlikely uses that he will refrain from engaging in. And the problem with expanded hours of commercial operation, it looks like, have been removed. So grateful for that. Because those expanded hours were very explicitly outside of resident or overnight uses and were given no justification in the proposed change. So overall, the request for this development plan change seems cavalier and careless and not mindful of the character of the neighborhood or the nature of the existing successful nature of the area, multifamily residential and professional office uses. The deletion of previous restrictions make it seem as though this could be a bait and switch, either for this owner or for the next. And the person has owned this place just for four months. The deletion of previous restrictions makes it seem as though it could be a bait and switch. For example, in two years, abandon the Airbnb idea and seek a more aggressive commercial use. So I do urge the planning commission to reject the requested deletion of the critical use restrictions and the time expansion, which you've already taken care of.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Thank you very much.
So Rachel?
And there's one other person to speak?
Okay, we've heard about, yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This other person likes speaking, do you have something different than what has been brought up by Ms. Meyer?
There are two additional exceptions of this that we wrote.
If it would be something different, your name and address, please?
Jesse Meyer, also nine twelve Elm Street.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir. So just three days ago, a for sale sign went up outside the adjacent property, which is a historical landmark house at ten forty-six Elm Street. It was one of the three houses that were allowed to transition from residential to central business with binding elements to accommodate an office for Orchestra Kentucky. The two adjoining lots together, actually three lots, as the open lot behind Orchestra in Kentucky is included in the sale offer, could hold a bigger attraction for a larger commercial venture that would be disruptive to the character of this residential plus offices in Old Houses neighborhood. Therefore, it seems especially important to constrain the current proposed development plan. This ties back to the earlier thought about bait and switch that she mentioned. And this could be a developer trying to buy two contiguous lots to tear down and develop a larger commercial development. The current property owner is very experienced in real estate turnover and had to have been aware at the time of purchase, just four months ago, of the binding elements attached to the property. If he thought they were preventative of his intended use, he should have pursued this prior to his purchase of it. Instead, he's now claiming a lack of reasonable use of the property despite knowing its limitations prior. Please do the responsible thing and keep the binding elements as they are or add only long term or short term residential use to be compatible with the character of the neighborhood if the buyer needs the rental income.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the comments that were presented here by Ms. Meyers?
Rachel, so with these changes, could we put a bar there? Could we put a restaurant there? I don't think so, correct?
Well, it depends on the use and there are certain setbacks when you're adjacent to a single family use. So if we look at the land use map, the property at the corner of East Eleventh and Elm is single family. And so on the face of the zone, yes. However, there are certain setbacks that come into play. Typically, short term rental uses have not been deemed the type of use that would trigger that additional setback for commercial development.
Getting a bill or a permit to do it, you're saying no.
You would have to apply for a variance for the setback adjacent to that single family use before some of those other types of commercial uses could even potentially be allowed on the property.
And going back to the question, Rachel, that if these two, if the property next door was bought by this owner or another owner and torn down and reaply- was bought by the, this owner or another owner and torn down and, and reapply, that had to be approved, though, wouldn't it, by historic preservation, if it got tore down? Or could they arbitrarily go in there and tear it down?
Yeah, so. Neighboring property is a local historic designation, so that would, the demolition of that would have to go before the board, but that has no, like, bearing on this property at all, so.
But, but the question was, Jenny, that if.
Yeah.
That, could this, someone buy this, this property, sorry, we're talking about tonight, and the property next door, tear them down and build hypothetically a commercial or a bar or, or whatever?
Demolition could theoretically be approved by the Historic Preservation Board, but there would have to be, um, a very good argument for that. It couldn't just be done, you know, for no reason, so.
Right. Thank you. So you said local historic designation, but is it in the district?
It's in the district.
In the district.
It is?
It is, isn't it?
I keep hearing it is, but I'm not, I don't.
But you're saying that the adjacent property is locally designated, which would es- essentially function as if it were in a local historic district.
This house is not in a historic district.
No, this house is not. We're talking about the adjacent property, though.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hearing this correctly, neither, neither house is in a historic, local historic district.
Correct.
The adjacent house is locally designated, which still has the same protection.
But as this house sits today, it's been, the use has been some type of office, correct?
Rental, wasn't it?
Rental.
Oh, so residential, okay. Not an office, residential, so it's been acting as a residential. So it could be rented, it, it could be rented out for long-term use.
No.
No?
No, I was actually checking. I thought this would come up in household living, so is, is not, single-family is not permitted in central business, standalone.
All right, so what is it, what is it being used as today?
It's vacant right now.
Okay, what was it being used before vacant?
At the auction, I went to the auction, it was vacant then.
Okay, but had somebody, had somebody been living there or had it been used as an office? That's my question.
Last use.
What was the last use?
I think it was long-term rental.
And the existing was single-family.
Or, or living, living.
Single-family.
A single family, someone was living there, okay?
Is it a rental or?
I don't know. We don't know, yeah. Okay, so going back to the questions on the floor, let's see if we're understanding this correctly. The ten forty Elm Street, uh, is now going to be proposed as a short-term rental, correct?
Yes, that's the current proposal.
Current proposal.
Along with some, the other changes in your packet for the.
Correct, yes.
Development plan conditions, yeah.
Yeah, and we're not talking about the property next door, we're just talking about ten forty-eight Elm Street. Ten, ten forty-eight Elm Street.
All right, so Rachel, back to the question, is as it sits today, it was sold at auction, last use was someone was living there, can it be rented today? Can it be rented to a family to move in there?
No, the ordinance is not supposed to be. I, I don't, I don't know how long it had been used as a single-family residence. It could be legal non-conforming, but in two thousand and six, it was rezoned for non-residential use, so I'm not, I'm not sure what the uses have been since that time, but the ordinance, per Article five, says that single-family standalone uses aren't allowed in central business.
Rachel, was the, uh, two thousand and six, was that the last zoning of this particular property?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Toh was the applicant in two thousand and six. Tau.
One other question. Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Was, um, is, are there other Airbnb or short-term rentals in that area, adjac- in, in close proximity to this property?
Uh, the closest ones I can think of, um, I think there may be one at the corner of.
Park.
Chestnut and.
Park, there's Simone Park and Simone Chestnut.
Is there not one on Main?
Yes, there's Simone Main. So these are short-term or long-term residential, or rentals, I'm sorry? The one on Chestnut and Park, or?
Short-term.
Short-term, okay, okay.
So, so the question I've got, I mean, you know, usually it's the other way around, where we're, we're dealing with a situation, we've got a residential house and somebody wants to convert it to a business. And, and to me, wouldn't we be best to convert this back to the neighborhood of, of a residential and take, and, and from what I understand what he's wanting to do, and maybe we can put it in here, it's not, you can't come rent it for one night, that it's gotta be a thirty-day rental.
But, but that's what's not allowed.
Because it's a simple business, and the request is to change the development plan conditions, not change the zoning.
Not change the zoning, so you can't, okay. What's the definition of a short-term rental?
What, what, I, I got a suggestion, and I don't know if it's a good one or not, but, uh, so what if we go back to the limited uses, of course, we'd have to ask the applicant to, uh, where the only uses would be the office and professional use and short-term rental. That would address the, I think, the concern I heard, plus, uh, still allow the, the only use that he is anticipating at this time, uh, and then if he decides to change that use or change the zone.
Come back.
You can come back and make another application, which would require another.
I agree.
Sounds reasonable.
DPC number five.
Let's, let's get Mr. Soy up here, if, so he, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're right.
Yeah, if he, Mr. Soy, did you hear what Mr. Peterson just said?
Go ahead, repeat that.
Sure, I'll, I'll just speak louder since none of the microphones are working on this side, so, uh, the, the proposal would be to leave, uh, the.
Use, use.
Right now, it's limited to office and/or professional use, so that's what you're, the only use, you're currently allowed to use that property now, but then only add the short-term rental that you're wanting to do as an additional use, and then leave all of the other, uh, uh, potential uses in the central business zone out of the mix altogether. And then if you, uh, later down the road want to come back, you could rezone the property to something different and have another public hearing. Uh, that would address, I think, the concerns, and they may want to speak again, but that we heard, uh, but then also allow you to get through tonight with potentially an approval.
Amen, office and short-term?
Mm-hmm.
How, how do you recommend that?
I'm sorry.
How do you recommend I do that?
We would just, uh, basically, here, we'll, we'll propose a change to the development plan condition in a minute, in a minute, that would just basically, simply say that the only two uses would be. Office professional, which allow, would allow, um, Rachel, correct me if I get this wrong, but like a, a, a one-person attorney's office or a, a small, uh, uh.
Accountant.
Something like that, uh, office, as the use is now, but then also would allow you to use it as a short-term rental, so you would have that option of either one of those two.
You could do both.
Do both.
Not just, but not the Airbnb or?
No, it would still allow an Airbnb. What, what Ben is saying is that the current restrictions, which is what led you to this application to begin with, is that the binding elements now say that the only use of the property can be office and/or professional, and you want to add the additional use of a short-term rental. So it would be what is already in place, plus the short-term rental.
Okay.
Is what Ben is suggesting.
Okay.
So in the development plan conditions that you proposed, number five is the one that currently limits the use to office professional. And so that number five would be amended to read like this. All uses of the property shall be defined as in the current zoning ordinance as office and/or professional or short-term residential rental. So do you, do you understand that, Ms. Soy, what he just said?
I believe so. Office and short.
Correct. So do you agree to those conditions?
I do.
Okay. Thank you very much. So the, the folks that are in the audience tonight and had the opposition, you have, you have three minutes.
They're done.
Thumbs up is all she wanted to.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Thank you all for the compromise, Ben, thank you for the clarification. Uh, is there anyone else in the audience tonight who has a opposition or, or to this request? Commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, document number twenty twenty-two four D P. Based upon testimony and document presented in this public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty conference plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in staff work. Either of, also find that they have a major change of economic, physical, and social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request that the findings of fact and recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am, the motion's approved, uh, Plan Commission final action. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-two seventy-five Z County. Philip H. Moore and Mary Beth Collin, Mary Beth Moore Collins have filed an application to rezonate tract of land containing approximately five acres located one sixty-five Gurkin Road from agriculture to RE residential state with the general development plan.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on August the twenty-seventh for the property outlined in yellow. Um, the current zoning of the property is ag, the current land use is also ag, and then the future land use designation is rural density residential, and the applicants have supplied the site plan in front of you. And again, they are proposing to rezone a portion of the property from ag to RE in order to develop a maximum of three single-family residential lots. And so moving over to page two, um, and looking at the site characteristics review, I just would like to point out the prime farmland designation, um, a majority, a majority of the property does contain a soil type that's classified as prime farmland. Looking down to the site design and compatibility review, um, looking to the surrounding architectural features, uh, the average home size of the area is one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three square feet, and then the median home size of the area is one thousand seven hundred and two square feet. Just over eighty percent of the homes have a garage, with a majority of those being two-car garages, either attached or detached, and the minimum home size proposed by the applicants in DPC number two is one thousand six hundred and fifty square feet, although this is not exclusive of garages. Staff asked that the applicants clarify if it is the intent of this DPC that the minimum square footage applied to conditioned living space only, however, this was not addressed by the applicants. Staff also suggested that the applicants may want to consider including a garage requirement in their DPCs to complement the existing properties in the area, and this was also not addressed by the applicants. And then looking over to page three and looking to the building materials, just under seventy percent of the homes have brick, stone, or cement board exteriors. Some of these homes also utilize vinyl as an accent material, and then roughly eighty-four percent of the homes have brick or stone foundations. The remaining foundations are mainly split-face block. Staff noted these items in our correspondence with the applicants. Proposed DPC number three does not limit the percentage of vinyl that can be utilized and allows for split-face block foundations. And then looking down to the development plan conditions, number one, there shall be a maximum of three lots. Two, deals with the square footage minimum. Three, looks to the building materials. Four, limits manufactured homes. Five, deals with orientation towards Gurkin Road. Six, deals with access to the property in coordination with KYTC. Seven, looks to, um, coordination for septic with Bayonne River Health Department. Eight, deals with, deals with sinkhole mitigation, and then nine, the front building setback line shall be sixty feet from the property line. Moving down to the focus twenty thirty category review, staff assessed twelve items, and I just would like to point out four for your consideration, and that'll actually move us over to page four. Um, with LU one point one point three, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area, including the proposed home size, exterior buil- exterior building materials, foundation materials, and absence of a garage requirement. Looking to LU two, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Um, again, those considerations regarding the home size, exterior and foundation materials, and absence of the garage requirement. And then looking down to H and two point one and H and four, the planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. So looking back to page one with some final points to consider, the application does comply with some of the criteria assessed in the review process, with considerations, again, noted regarding the home size, exterior building materials, foundation materials, and absence of the garage requirement. Um, again, that median home size is one thousand seven hundred and two square feet, and they're proposing a minimum of one thousand six hundred and fifty square feet, uh, but not specifying if this is exclusively conditioned living space. The existing homes in the area, a majority of those have a two-car garage, attached or detached, and they have not included a requirement for a garage in their application. And a majority of the existing homes in the area also have brick, stone, or cement board exteriors with brick or stone foundations, and the proposal does not limit the percentage of vinyl that can be utilized and does allow for split-face block foundations, and then a majority of the area proposed to be rezoned is also classified as prime farmland. That is all that staff have for this application, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions for the staff report? Thank you very much. Is the applicant here or the representative, and would like to make a comment, please?
I have a couple of questions.
Uh, yes, if one of y'all would come to the microphone, uh. Yes, sir, if you'd state your name and address, please, sir.
My name's Jake Low. Uh, my address is two five zero one Old Halls Creek Road, Beaver Dam, Kentucky, four two three two zero.
All, did you say?
Old Halls Creek Road, yes.
Your first name?
Jake.
Jake, Jake, you, uh, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, addressing the, uh, square footage, I'm sorry.
Jake Low.
And are you?
My mom is Beth, and she's right there. I'm representing her.
She's the applicant?
Yes.
Mary Beth Moore Collins.
That's her, yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry, and she's present in.
Yes.
In the hearing, sorry.
She just told me she'd rather have me get up here and talk to her, so that's why I'm sitting here.
Um, on the, on the sixteen hundred and fifty square feet.
Sir.
Are you okay if we put, that's conditioned space?
Yes, um, I have no problem with that. Basically, what we did, um, a few years ago, the, the, basically, the land on my family's farm, uh, was zoned, and they put, I guess, like, a list of restrictions on what's already been done, so I just kept everything the same, so that way, like, what's already been built in the neighborhood in the last two or three years, it's identical to what has already been approved.
Would you also be okay with a, at, at least a one-car garage or carport?
Um, we're gonna do a detached garage, hopefully, at some point, but with the funds right now, I just didn't want to limit myself, so I kind of kept that the same, um, as for right now, um, I wasn't planning on a detached garage, but maybe in the future. I just wanted to put that there, because basically, there's a couple of houses on the street that have one, and I just wanted to keep the, the planning and zoning things the same exact way as what's already been approved around me, so that's why I kept it that way.
I think what Mr. Volker was asking is, most existing homes in the area have a two-car garage that are attached or detached, and I think what he's asking is for compatibility in the neighborhood, that maybe you would consider agreeing, not, might do it, but consider agreeing to matching the other homes in the neighborhood.
I, I'm not gonna be doing a detached garage at the moment, just because of funds and financing, so, um, just wanted to maybe do that in the future.
Okay, let's, what about the, um, I mean, by the way. Okay. Let's, what about the, I mean, by the way it's written right now, it could be 100% vinyl. Would you be okay if we put some, and if you look around, not, there's not much, I don't think that's 100% vinyl?
There actually is. That's what was kind of confusing with what the person said before me. There's actually a row of seven houses, I believe, and that are right on the same exact side as me. And six of the seven are 100% vinyl, sir.
Okay.
So, going to that map, show us what you were just talking about that are vinyl. Which one of those houses?
So, basically, if you were to start where my lot is and go up the road, I guess, basically, if you, there would be a driveway right there. You can take a left. And there's a row of like six or seven houses, and all of them, except for one, are 100% vinyl.
And do those houses, do those houses have a garage?
No, sir. There's only one that's on the same side of the street as me that has a detached garage. And that was actually the one that was just recently built about in the last few months. But all the houses that are on my side of the street, none of them have a detached garage, except for one.
And an attached garage.
An attached garage? There is, there is two houses out of the seven that do have a attached garage.
Are you okay putting an attached garage on your houses?
Well, believe it or not, my original plan, like the blueprint of my house, was an actual two-car garage. But I was gonna leave that as unfinished space because I kind of preferred to have extra bedroom possibly than a two-car garage. But I left the floor plan kind of open to, basically, that would give me a little wiggle room with my contractor and stuff like that, so.
I think the issue that either, that myself might have is we're talking about three additional lots.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
So, if we don't do that, if we don't put something in there about garage or something, we could end up with three houses, no garages, and with houses around it that do have garages. So, I think from a planning and zoning standpoint, we would like to see at least a one-car attached garage.
Right. That's gonna be a question from Mr. Adams because I have no idea. Like, this is, this is the plan that we've got. I've basically left the same binding elements, the same that have been the same since, I mean, basically, there's been three houses or four built in the last two or three years. And I, my binding elements are basically identical as to every house that's been built there in 20 years, basically. So, that's, that's why I left them the way I did.
Let me ask the staff. Ms. Hurd, is that correct, what he's...
The newer homes that have been built, they are vinyl. Some of them have split-face foundations. But the older homes, I guess, across, directly across the street and going back south, the majority of those are brick.
And what about the garage?
I forget what the percentage is in our staff report, but both old and new. What did we say? I can't remember.
Over 80% of the homes have a garage. Majority of these have two-car garages.
Yes.
So, I think what Mr...
So, I think where I'm sitting is, I think I would be okay with some kind of compromise. I either want to see garages, or I'd want to see not all vinyl.
Not all vinyl, as in, like, you would want a percentage of my house to be the board material or like...
Brick, board. It could be either one of those, but not 100. If you, if you're, I do not want to do garages. My personal opinion is then we're gonna need to dress the houses up.
Okay. Well, I'm not really for sure if I'm gonna build a garage, yes or no. I mean, I would like to do one eventually. Eventually, I would like to build a detached garage, maybe. But, I mean, as for right now, with my funding and like with the interest rates that have went up, I just wanted to leave it the same.
Well, Jake, I think that's understandable. But what we're, what we're approving tonight is what is gonna be built. And it's not...
So, from where I'm sitting, yes, from where I'm sitting, if we don't do one of these, my, my vote will be a no. I'm trying... So, if that's your stance, and I'm only one vote.
Mom, would you like to step up here and say anything? Uncle Phil?
Maybe you could talk to her before she, or if...
Well, basically, we've waited about three or four months for this hearing tonight to be able to get my building permit, and we're ready to build. And they're asking questions that, that I really don't know for sure how to answer, so.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. If you would state your name and address.
Mary Beth Moore, 807 Gurken Road, 4211.
Ms. Moore, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
So, you've, you've heard the questions here tonight raised about either a garage or the 100% vinyl material?
That's what I'm questioning because I built 771 Gurken Road, no garage, all vinyl. I built my new house four years ago. I do have a garage. And that's 807 Gurken Road. It's all vinyl. And then, I'm thinking...
It has a garage?
Yeah. My old one didn't. Right. Yeah. But I'm thinking the other two houses getting towards the land where he's wanting to change from ag to residential, I think they're vinyl too. That's what I was telling the surveyor just a minute ago. So, I'm trying to figure out. I think there's one new house that's, that's maybe hardy board.
Okay. Hardy board'd be great.
Yeah. But I don't know for sure. That's what it is.
Yeah, I understand.
Because it's a bigger house, and it needs those little people around, around the neighborhood. So, that's what I was questioning too.
Well, from...
It's probably whatever he can do financially, you know.
Yes, ma'am. I think the financial part of it and the building costs, we, we understand. But once we approve this, I think what Mr. Volker's saying is we want it to conform with the other houses in the area. And I think what he's saying is a one-car garage, or if there's not a one-car garage, a more modern masonry material for the front of the houses.
He's been telling me with, like I said, the interest rates, what's going on, is he wants a garage down, down, down the road. But I don't think financially, he'd be able to make the payment with adding that out to the side or whatever.
So, from my standpoint, then it's not gonna pass tonight will be my vote.
Okay.
So, that's the, that's, that's the decision that you guys gotta make. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying from my personal opinion, we either need at least a one-car garage, or we need to dress...
Right now or down the road is what you're saying.
Well, we gotta put it in the binding elements.
We gotta put it tonight. We have to do this tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Jim, would you state your name and address? Jim, state your name and address, please.
James Adams, 1537 Highland Way, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we brought this before. He's got a house that he wants to build, and it doesn't have a garage. That's why there's no garage put in there. He plans on building a garage in the future. But it's like anything else. He's a young man, just...
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but, but from our, but from our standpoint, we can't talk about what he might do.
I'm getting there. Okay. I'm getting to what you're addressing. So, that's why we're here and why it was like it is. A compromise I think we can get is we can restrict the two outlots to a one-car garage. And I think he would be okay with using the hardy board or a percentage of vinyl, like, like you see, a lot of them may have the top vinyl and the rest hardy board or brick. Okay? So, I think as a compromise, those are some things that he could do, okay? That, that I would recommend him to do. He's gotta do it. So, the suggestion was that we restrict, because he's not really wanting to sell the out parcels anytime soon anyway. But we could restrict them to a one-car garage. And then, we could take the restriction and, like you suggested, the hardy board, or brick, or the other materials that we said, and restrict it to 30% vinyl or something like that. So, that is a, an alternative that I was...
I think what you're saying, Mr. Adams, is if your client would agree to it, is a one-car garage and the...
Just on the two lot, out parcels.
Two of the three, not his.
Okay. And so, then he can, then when he gets his done, then he, when he can afford it, he's gonna build his. Because we can, on a five-acre tract right now, we can build anything he wants.
Absolutely.
So, I mean...
You can build one.
Huh? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but this way, it gets him a bigger house, okay, like you were saying. And it will get him in the future his two garages like his neighbors got.
So, he's saying two of the three would have garages, one car at least, and that 70% of the houses would either be brick or hardy board?
He has to agree to that, but yeah, that's what I said.
Okay. All three.
Yeah.
And we're not dictating whether they're an attached or detached.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
All right. Because he has to...
I'm just trying to build a house, or whatever you guys tell me I need to do because I'm waiting four months for this hearing to be able to...
Just come up to the microphone just a minute so we can hear you.
Yeah. I'm okay with whatever compromise the board feels is necessary. I mean, this is my engineer. He's worked with me for months.
Surveyor.
Surveyor. This is my surveyor, and, and I'm gonna do whatever he recommends. He's the person that made the list of these elements for me to get approved. So, I'm okay with whatever compromise that this board feels is necessary. I'm just trying to build a house.
That's great. Thank, thank you very much.
Will you, will you read them back?
Beth and Phil, if you all will listen to this, because it's, it's important that you understand what the commitment is. That development plan condition three shall now read, each new residence shall be constructed of either, shall be constructed of 70% either brick or hardy board, modern masonry material. And two of the three lots shall be constructed with at least a one-car garage.
And the, and the 1,650 is conditioned?
Each new single-family residence shall have at least 1,650 square feet of heated or conditioned living space.
Sir.
Okay. And Beth and Phil, you all...
Would you come up, Ms., I guess, Beth, we need to get her to the microphone to agree to these so we can have it on the record? Okay. So, you heard Mr. Moore's, the new conditions, conditioned development plan?
1,650, and that's pretty much what I was, I think I did when I saw those two.
Let's read it. Let's read them to you.
1,650 square feet of heated space.
Right.
And 70% shall be, 70% of the exterior of the three homes will be constructed of either brick or hardy board. All right? And finally, two of the three lots will have at least a one-car garage.
With the plan. Okay. I understand that. Okay.
Must, that'll, your building permit will have to read that way.
Do you agree to those conditions?
Sorry, Dave.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Moore did too.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much, Ms. Collins. Commissioners, are there any other questions? You've heard the requests, the conditional agreements that have been modified. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, Chair Warren, but I have a comment.
Okay.
It's a compliment to the, to the parties that are, that made the negotiation and compromise because those, those kind of things help, help situations when you're, when you're in these kind of meetings. So, want to compliment, I'm not sure what Jake's last name is, but the...
Low.
Low. Okay. I appreciate your compromise ideal.
I'm just trying to get my house built.
Okay. We understand.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Get your house built and find some cheap building materials.
That's, that's what I'm doing.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. Have a motion to...
Dean, you, you might ask about opposition.
Oh, is there any other opposition? Excuse me. I'm, excuse me. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Your name and address, please, sir?
I'm Davis, 715 Gurken Road.
Mr. Davis, swear to tell the truth?
I do. I really just have a question because I think most, we just built the house right adjacent to that property. So, our question was going to be, when we heard it's gonna be multiple lots, would there be an HOA? What were gonna be the restrictions? So, I think most of that is answered, except for the two lots that he's not going to build on is, how long is he gonna keep those lots, or how is he gonna divvy that out and when, I guess?
Well, I think...
Would not be under any timeframe on the, on those lots, and there would not be an HOA.
Yeah. It would be, if, if it's three years from now or five years from now, is...
That's really the only question.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Davis?
It does.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that has a question or opposition? So, we call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the Prozoning Map Amendment together with and conditions upon a general development plan, document number 2022-75Z County. Based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the Prozoning Map Amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further questions, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion approved and goes to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you all for all being here tonight. Our next item tonight is 2022-97Z County. Fayette City Hall and the City-County Planning Commission have filed an application to rezone portions of a tract of land containing approximately .64 acres located 302 and 515 Hallview Road from ag to RE residential state and RE residential state to ag. And whose cleanup?
Yeah, this is a cleanup. We don't, we have a staff report, happy to answer questions. But unless you all see the need to formally review all of this, this is there for your reference, and it's a cleanup.
All right. But we do need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Prozoning Map Amendment, document number 2022-97Z County. Based upon testimony presented by the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the Prozoning Map Amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further questions, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain.
Ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion has been approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Any other discussion items tonight? Our next meeting will be December the 15th. And do we have a full agenda? Two items.
There you go.
They're Christmas.
So, it's... It's, it's Christmas in Dixie. Thank you all for being here tonight, staff. Thank you, as always, for all, all that you guys do. Thank you, Mr. Moore, and we stand adjourned.